Tony, you good? Andy, good?
We know God.
Good evening. This is Peter Casper. I'd like to call it Town of Hebron's Board of Selectmen's regular meeting to order for April 3rd, 2025. It is 7:01 a.m. Please note that we do have a quorum, although Claudia Riley is not joining us, but we have the balance of the board. And so with that meeting called the order, I'd like to ask people to join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those that are joining us virtually or those that will view us later at some later date. And obviously, thank you for all those who are joining us here in person. Mr. Tierney, any additions or changes to our agenda?
Not sure.
Any on the board?
No.
Okay, that moves us to Section 4 on Agenda, which is Public Comment. A section of the Agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should simply make arrangements through the Town Manager's office, through myself as the Board Chair, frankly, through any other member of the Board, because we do definitely want to hear from you. Persons remotely wishing to comment, please type "comment" and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized by Donna and Donna. Is anyone online who wishes to make a public comment?
There was no one at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in our audience here wishes to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, and please note, if you do change your mind, there is a Section 12 on our agenda at the end of our meeting, which allows you to also participate in public comment. Mr. Tierney, good to know. Special recognition.
We don't have anybody for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Very much. Moves it to Section 6, which is Appointments and Resignations.
I know. 6A, Appointments and Resignations. A Parks and Recreation Commission resignation attaches correspondence from Kate Wilcox, resigning her position on the Parks and Recreation Commission effective April 12th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Would you be so kind?
Sure. Moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, accept the resignation of Kate Wilcox from the Parks and Recreation Commission with regret and thanks for her service to the Town of Hebron.
Motion's read. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Tierney, B?
Open Spaced Land Acquisition Committee resignation attaches correspondence from Kate Wilcox, resigning her position on the Open Spaced Land Acquisition Committee effective April 12th, 2025.
Keith, would you be so kind?
Moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, accept the resignation of Kate Wilcox from the Open Spaced Land Acquisition Committee with regret and thank her for her service to the Town of Hebron.
Thank you, Keith. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Mr. Larson?
Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Tierney, C?
Economic Development Commission alternate appointment attaches correspondence from Tim Casey, an affiliated expressing interest in being appointed to the Economic Development Commission. There are currently two alternate member vacancies.
Sure. Moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, appoint Tim Casey as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission to a term to run until December 2026 or December 2028.
Thank you. Motion's read. Is Mr. Casey in attendance remotely, Donna? Mr. Casey?
He is not. I don't see him here.
He doesn't need to be. Just if he was, he'd be happy. If he's welcome to make a comment. Any discussion?
We need to decide a term.
Yes. That's not a valid motion.
Oh, right.
We need one of those dates.
Right. So which date do you want? And I can read it again for you. Which date do we want? Is there a reason why?
Did he make a preference on short term or long term?
I don't even...
There's two...
Because it's too open. There's two vacancies.
There's two vacancies, yeah.
Yes, we just listed both of them. I guess you're right. We should make a date.
Okay, so let's do this. Unless anyone has an objection?
He's not in attendance?
No.
Okay.
Since we are having difficulty with the vacancies, and we have two, I have no issue with the longer term.
I have no issue with the longer term.
No, it should have been longer.
Could you please reread that with 2028?
Moved at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, appoint Tim Casey as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission to a term to run until December 2028.
Thank you for that revised motion. Any additional discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Mr. Larson?
Dale Larson, aye.
Thank you. Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you for picking that up. Appreciate that. Okay. Yeah. Always probably best part of Agenda, the Town Manager's Report.
Hmm.
Thank you. So the budget will be going to referendum on May 6th. There will be a hearing on the budget with the finance coming up. As far as some of the ARPA projects, I know it's asterisk on the agenda, but I had to figure a little bit of an update on the Town Manager's Report, because that's what we're working on. So the lights are installed. They're going to start doing the electrical fencing at Vets Park. So they're like two weeks ahead of schedule on that. The skate park has come together. They're also ahead of schedule on that. The dog park, we're holding off on the fence for a little while until we get the well drilled. We have to find a new location, because the location we picked is on a portion of the property that we used state funds to purchase that, which we had to call the state and get permission. And they said that would not be permissible, so we have to move that. So as soon as we get that location picked out, that will be scheduled and done. So we're moving forward. And all the other projects, the security is almost... What percentage would you say was completed? Ninety? Eighty?
I would say eighty. They're working at... For Hill Park, there's a few things that need to be buttoned up at some of the locations, and then all of the training has to be done. Signing the codes and the keys and all of that.
So are the keys going to go away and everything's going to be with the fobs, or?
Fobs will be what we use primarily with the X.
Yep. So we're still working... Did a lot of today on the training for the OSHA regulations. We did the hearing test today, and we've been buttoning up the bloodborne pathogens for the people that needed that. So that's going well. We're well within our parameters. We have a fill-in the new resident plumber, so we've been trying to bring him up to speed. The office, the staff and budgeting, so that's keeping us a little bit busy ahead of the office today.
Who is it? Andy?
Justin Haggerty. But he's... He applied for the position.
Oh, it's not official yet?
Yeah. We're hoping that he is a successor, but three or four put in for that.
Okay. You know, if it was official, sorry.
We're working with the finance on the audit course and the bonding and ARPA funding. Keeps us busy. Working with the town planner on some new projects. And the Chatham Health District, we had a special meeting today with the cuts on the federal government. The Town Health District's budget is going to be for next year's budget that we approved for about $103,000 light. So luckily, we have a contingency that we plan to use to cover that shortfall. And then we'll see how stuff unfolds. I know the states look at an increase to per capita due to the cuts. And so maybe that $103,000 could be down less to a $70,000 loss or even a 60. But until we know that, the monies come in the form of grants, and they were used for hours worked by the personnel at the health district. So it's not like something we could just not do. So we'll continue to monitor that, but that was one of the effects that we've gotten. And then also, I don't know how it's going to affect our library, but it could affect some programs, the public library as well. We'll keep you posted on that. And that's what I had. That's what we're working on.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. That moves us to 8 on the Agenda. 8A is the ARPA discussion, which has just been provided. No need for further discussion there. 8B, Department of Public Action Committee update. I would normally take that. I'm going to defer to Section 9A, which is where the action will be brought before you for consideration. So I will move to Town Manager's Annual Evaluation. So I will start that by thanking Tiffany and Keith for spearheading that and some good discussion that we had. And I think at this juncture, I don't know that there's original action to be taken, right? Unless there's anything new stuff, I think we have signed objectives and the evaluation has been completed. So unless... Andy, you're good?
Yep.
So thank you.
Yeah.
Great work. Appreciate it. So...
Great job.
Yes. Andy's stuff.
Really good work.
Yep. Really well done and appreciate everyone's cooperation to get it done in a more timely manner than maybe years past when I was involved. So thank you for that. D is no need there. That moves us, Mr. Tierney, to 8E. Local option for use of the alternative motor vehicle depreciation schedule. I defer to you to sort of bring that topic back up, and then we'll see if we can move that forward.
Yeah, so just quickly, I find it in my packet. I have a bunch of stuff. Thank you, Donna. Yeah. Now, yeah, our assessor in attendance, if there's any questions. I think just overall, reiterate for the public that's here with us today. So the local option for the use of alternate motor vehicle depreciation schedule. There was a discussion at the last meeting, and the Board of Selectmen requested the Town Attorney advise and ordinance would be required to implement the local option. The Town Attorney's response is that ordinance is not required. The Board of Selectmen is authorized to approve. So that was the question on the legality. What this would do is it changes how you appraise a motor vehicle from 90% or at 85% to 90% to try to recoup some of the lost tax revenue the town has with the way the... We have the motor vehicle mill rate cap, and then we also... It changed how you value the vehicle. So when doing that, we lost quite a bit of money off the grand list. So the legislature recognized that some towns may need some help in this, and they've come up with this option. And many of our neighboring and our towns are considering doing this. Some have already done it. There's a few that I know that didn't do it, but at this time, I think I'm recommending that we take a hard look at this and try to implement this. And Suzanne, if you have anything you wanted to say in regards to the... As the assessor?
The only thing I can say is that by and large, the towns around us have adopted it. So I have an updated map if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Sure.
So I don't have the time or the opportunity to call every town, but we do have a hotline where they report. The pink shows the ones that have adopted it. The orange knows. There are some indicators on the side. Again, it's a little rudimentary, but the majority of the towns have adopted it, and it's more than two to one for the towns that have been reporting that have moved forward. Or so we would still end up down with motor vehicles, but it would substantially reduce the loss. People overall are still going to save by and large on the taxes they pay. It just narrows that percentage.
Myself, from what I've heard and what I've tried to read and understand, and of course, it's sometimes difficult to understand some of this stuff, but it just seems to be more fair to all the taxpayers in the town. You know, because at the end of the day, the town still needs a certain amount of dollars to operate. And so this way here, you know, people who may be renting or whatever are going to still be assessed something on their vehicles. Whereas before, they would get off a little bit more free, putting the burden on the actual property owners. So I'm supportive of this. I think it makes sense for towns like Hebron.
Good.
I basically have the same opinion that I had last meeting. That I am in favor for it for now, so that we don't have a large kind of shock to the system as far as taxes goes. But I think long term, you know, we do see quite a few on here that say no, and a couple of towns that say no for current year, yes for future years. I think I would like us to fall into that category. I'm in favor of adopting this for fiscal year '26 and '27 and then having it sunset.
Are y'all waiting for me?
Yeah. You don't have to say anything. Just look and give me shit.
I thought that that was interesting too in the map, that there were some that said no for like right now, but would enact it the following year. And I think there's some value to that, because I think it gives taxpayers an opportunity to anticipate what's coming. I share Dan's concerns, obviously, about the amount of funds that are needed to run a town. And we saw that this past budget year was incredibly difficult. But I think I would lean and follow... I think I'd be leaning toward that as well, for like following the steps of the towns that are, you know, like not right now for this year, but for the following year, yes. And then seeing what goes from there.
Yeah, and I think... Andy, correct me if I'm wrong. I think fiscal year '27 is our revow. So yeah, I think sunsetting it, you know, corresponding with the revow would hopefully kind of lessen that shock to taxpayers as they come back onto the new schedule.
That's also a good point. We got revow coming.
So that would be my recommendation as a friendly amendment.
My thought on it is actually just to approve it. I think, you know, the pressure that we have on our grand list going forward is pretty significant. I don't see this as anything other than helping to close a gap that will likely continue. So, you know, on the surface, I am not opposed to some kind of friendly amendment, but I, you know, my opinion, since everyone's expressed theirs, is that I would actually agree to it as presented. So, but you, Tiffany, you were talking about waiting. You're talking about sunsetting. So two different things. Am I hearing that correctly?
Um...
Is that the opinion?
I think... I mean, I'm open to the concept of sunsetting, but I was more reacting to the map. Where some towns had decided not this year, but we will do it next year. And I think that is what I'm more in favor of at this moment, if we have to come to some kind of agreement. I'm open to discussing sunsetting, obviously. I think it's challenging, because we don't have the full board here. Maybe that would be more helpful. But I do like the idea of everything stays the same this year. That way, everybody has a year to kind of prepare for what the assessed value in your car might look like this year. I don't think it hurts. The budget's on its way to a vote, and we're going to kind of have to figure out what we get from there. But at least next year, we know that there's some difference we could recoup for the following year. So...
You know, as I say, my thing is that this will actually help to add a little bit of cushioning to the current property owners who right now are going to bear the brunt of the budget increases. This would help to spread it out so that all property owners and vehicle owners are sharing some of the pain, not just on those with real property, i.e. land. And so that's why I feel that this would be fair. People that rent, who have high-priced automobiles are going to be not getting the... Or they're not having to pay what one would consider quote-unquote their "fair share", because their taxes are going to be limited to that rate that the state arbitrarily set. So this helps those people to be a little bit more in tune with helping to finance the needs of the town.
Suzanne, excuse me. You had, I think, mentioned last time, it was between a $200,000 and $300,000 estimate... $200,000 to $300,000 estimated impact on the grand list. If we move forward, is that... Am I remembering that correctly? Okay.
I mean, people that have both motor vehicles and property are still going to, you know, have money to pay. But it's, to me, it's just a break for the renters.
All right, but we don't have a lot of renters.
No, but...
I mean, there's clinical renters, but that a majority of our residents are not renting. But doesn't... I understand everyone's impact is important. There's no individual that's not important. So what I'm hearing is if we don't make some kind of modification to the resolution, which I apologize, has not been read, so I'm going to read that. But as I do that, it doesn't sound like we'll have agreement or be able to pass the resolution as presented. So, but I'm going to read it just so we have it on the record, and then we'll keep discussing this. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved adoption of the local option allowed under Public Act 25-2, HB 7067, Section 7B, to elect to apply a modified schedule of depreciation as outlined in Public Act 25-2, HB 7067, Section 7B, with respect to motor vehicles based upon manufacturer's suggested retail price of such motor vehicles, provided no motor vehicle shall be assessed at an amount less than $500. So, resolution has been read. Let's return to discussion. Because I think where we are, what I'm hearing is, doesn't move forward unless we make some modification. Or, I mean, then I don't think... I'm not hearing that anybody wants to ignore it. I just think, right, so if we don't modify the resolution, I'm hearing that, at least from the comments, that it probably doesn't move forward as presented. Am I accurate in that assumption?
Because this is a resolution by the Selectmen, and I don't foresee anything changing in the Public Act going forward. If we establish it for multiple years before it expires, a future Board of Selectmen could choose to make it permanent.
You could revisit it on a yearly basis, and that would probably, you know, that you would be into another Board of Selectmen at some point.
I mean, we can pass it now with the sunset option, and it can be revisited either next year or in '27.
Wouldn't even have to be sunset. Couldn't we pass it for one tax year?
Yeah, we could ask for one tax year if you want.
One tax year.
Yep.
And that allows, you know, sort of revisit it at that juncture.
Then we'd have to... Yeah, we'll just be back here in a year.
Yeah, but I think my hesitation is to... I think it doesn't hurt to review things like this, to actually see what the impact is to the grand list, to see if it's helping, to see if it's hurting folks in town. So I would, if you made that friendly amendment, I'd be more open to getting in on the books with the caveat, we're going to review it every year.
Okay.
It's kind of where... Yeah, I'm trying to...
You understand. We're trying to make some sort of...
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the review option. I just did not want to have a feeling that it's permanent tonight and just never ever revisit it.
Just add a friendly amendment that this will be reviewed on an annual basis.
It makes it easier, though. It's not an ordinance. We don't have to go through the whole process. Yeah, I'd be more open to that. I think, to me, it was the permanency that I was comfortable on.
Okay, so if I added this resolution, will be reviewed annually for possible modification? Would that language be reasonable?
I would for one year.
Or you want to be... You would rather say this tax year, 20...
Well, I mean, we do have to specify that. So you're adding a sentence to the end about reviewing each year. But then where it says adoption of a local option, it should be for fiscal year '26.
Okay.
Are we good with just saying for fiscal year '26, or would you be better with July through June?
We're going to grand list year. So when they discuss, when, from an assessment point of view, we always work on a grand list year. So adopting a local option, if you change it, then when you... When you were doing it for your fiscal year, it impacts our assessment year.
Should we say assessment year then? Which is easier for you?
For me, I work in an assessment year.
Let's say assessment.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
It's actually better.
Yeah, let's just be very clear.
For a grand list year.
Yeah, it's actually better.
A grand list year 2025, 2026, or 2025? How do you word that?
2024.
2024. I'll never figure that. A grand list year 2024. Okay. Let me take a little spin at this, and then let's see how I do. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved adoption of the local option for grand list year 2024, allowed under Public Act 25-2, HB 7067, Section 7B, to elect to apply a modified schedule of depreciation as outlined in Public Act 25-2, HB 7067, Section 7B, with respect to motor vehicles based upon manufacturer's suggested retail price of such motor vehicles, provided that... Provided no motor vehicle shall be assessed at an amount less than $500. This resolution will be reviewed annually for possible modification.
Love it.
Hey. Any additional discussion with that modified resolution? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain.
Dale Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passes as modified. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Suzanne, for all your work in preparing, so we could understand.
Thank you very much for the map.
Yeah, the map was very helpful.
Very good. Thank you so much.
It changes now.
8F is no action needed. Mr. Tierney, any other old business you wish to bring before the board?
Do not.
Any member of the board wish to bring any old business?
No.
Moves us to 9A. Mr. Tierney, for new business?
Definitely in full supplemental appropriation requested from Department of Public Works Design Professionals of the Department of Public Works. And it's a proposed resolution.
Okay. All right, so sorry to do two in a row, but I'm going to read the resolution, and then we'll open it up for discussion and also some participation from Mr. Steiner as well, I think, would be warranted, or Mr. Lechter as well, also on the committee. Be resolved pursuant to Section 303B of the Hebron Town Charter that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $730,000 to engage a contractor to prepare a program, design documents, and cost estimates to build a new Hebron Public Works facility at 550 Old Chester Road in Amstyn, Connecticut, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval for approval or presentation. It shouldn't be eventual approval. Shouldn't it be... We're going to bring it before a town meeting. So we don't know that the town meeting will... The taxpayers will approve it.
Oh, yeah. Selectmen first need to approve it.
But why does it say for eventual approval at the special... Is that what you're...
Yes. I'm sorry. I just got caught up.
That's the money.
But we don't know that it's going to approve, right? It's for presentation at a special town meeting scheduled for that, because we don't know that it's going to be approved or not.
I'm fine with presentation.
I'm fine with presentation.
Okay. Forward to the Board of Finance for approval, presentation at the special town meeting scheduled for April 24, 2025. So eventual approval has been replaced by presentation. Okay, I apologize. I should have probably connected on that prior to that.
Consideration.
Consideration.
Okay.
Consideration is...
Consideration. That's better. That's better. Eventual... For consideration. That's better, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need me to reread that, or are we good?
No, we're good.
So thank you. That's a better word, choice of words. Okay, so what I would like to do is ask Mr. Steiner... Oh, go ahead.
So I'm confused. So maybe just before you move forward, were you looking to combine under the old business, item B, that we skipped over with this item?
I didn't have a... Yeah, well, I didn't have an update. The update was ultimately to defer to...
Okay, you're just going to forego that?
Yes, because I thought this was really the substantive update.
I just want to make sure I add that correctly.
Yeah, I apologize for not being clear on that. Okay, so, Mr. Steiner, if you would be so kind, and please, Donna has a seat for you today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's important to understand sort of what's coming before the town meeting relative to the overall cost structure of this endeavor, and maybe an opportunity to sort of just provide some context briefly. So then we can open it up for discussion.
That's good. Overall, the construction from start to finish was broken into six very distinct tasks. What we... The $730,000 represents is the dollars necessary to get everything that's necessary to bring a project both schematically and financially to a town referendum. It is first at the schematic, where the architect will generate a series of conceptual sketches that will be vetted out by not only DPW Director Paul Forrest, here goes Ben, but also his staff, engaged building official fire marshal town planning. And there obviously will be reach out to state officials to make sure that whatever is being put for everybody in pre-planning is agreed. Once a concept is accepted, and only when a concept is accepted by everybody, is being... Meeting everybody's requirements, then the next phase is what we call design development. And that's where a little bit more... and that's where a little bit more, as I say, identification, he just put on the skeleton of the property. And part of that effort is there, in paperwork that I sent to town manager's office, there's a series of allowances to do some exploratory evaluation, not only in the buildings relative to hazardous material, but also to understand what lies beneath the surface, because the last thing we want to do is put together a plan and go and dig for foundations or roads and find out we have subsoil issues of whatever kind, hazardous material, unsuitable material. So the first two phases of what the cost is for seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to really be in a position to come to the, uh, the town residence with not only a concept, concept that is accepted by appropriate stakeholders, but also a budget, an overall cost to construct. And included in the cost to construct, the overall, um, contract proposal from Silver Petraselli, wrong numbers was like one point six million dollars, the balance, the difference between the seven hundred and thirty thousand less the hundred, from the hundred and fifty thousand would be included in the referendum. So the balance to finish the project, that design wise would be included in, uh, the referendum dollars.
So we, we can't, you can't bring the project to referendum without this expenditure.
Absolutely not, we, we really, there's a lot of things that need to be satisfied, so the, this, these dollars irrespective of where a project, whether it's the DPW, a new school, a new firehouse, new office building, these are absolutely mandatory tests, steps that, that need to happen in order to be able to legitimately bring a project to town residence for vote.
Right, so without that work, we can't openly come up with a cost to then bring the referendum, but once the project starts assuming it passes referendum, then the additional design costs are important, because obviously you start constructing, and then all the construction related architectural needs are triggered at that juncture, so it is, I appreciate that, because one of the things as we move forward, you see a total cost in your, uh, in your packets, and then you see less than half of that is referendum, I mean, I'm sorry, it goes to town meeting, and that could lead to some public, uh, confusion, obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, we are doing the best we can to communicate these through our communication committee and through the work of, uh, of them, whether it's through the, um, the River East, whether it's on the town website, FAQs, we're putting a lot of this information out, but it is, it is a little confusing unless you're sort of right in the middle of it.
You're absolutely.
And then, even for me, right in the middle of it, it's still confusing, which is why Richard and Mal help me sort of navigate through that among other folks on the committee, so.
Another way to look at it is in the, we, the town meeting will include the first two phases, the referendum will include the, the other four phases.
Right, so it'll be clear in the referendum, this will be a component of the cost structure within the referendum, among the many things that build that final construction number, will be an element of architectural costs, which you'll see that balance show up at that juncture. It's just, you might get questions ultimately saying, hey, how come there's architectural costs, we, didn't we just approve that a year ago? The first, the first part of it, but at the end of the day, without this, um, we can't move forward. And as you can see in the, in the packet, this, you know, in addition to being, um, our first choice as a firm, they also happen to be low price as well.
Always a good thing.
It's, makes it a little easier to explain. But again, as we talked about before, we didn't know the price until after the selection was made, so it was an opportunity to really try to just focus on the right firm, so that's, I just thought that additional context might help in the discussion, so. Question, discussion, resolution's been read as modified, thank you very much, I'll go anywhere. Other thoughts on this item?
On this one, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
To say, I actually, bringing up the same thing as you just brought up, and I got a clarification from town staff, because I'm looking going, okay, why this?
Yeah.
Not the, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think the only thing I would say, and that's just to echo what you've already said Pete, is, you know, thank you to everyone who's involved in getting the information out on this, because, um, I personally think you've been doing a great job, um, you know, the, this is a project that I feel a lot more informed on as just a member of the general public than, you know, some, maybe some of the things in the past. So, thank you very much for all, all the hard work and all the time you put into it, um, as a resident, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Resolution's read with.
I'd like to, I'd just like to echo that, but I also wanted to point out that David Rose is joining us virtually, and I know he's a member of your committee, so thank you for.
Now, David, and I think, and I appreciate it, I, I think one of the things we learned in the past, and, um, is we can always improve our communication, and having a separate communication committee and, and having um, the challenge of that committee, or the, the challenges that the committee brought forward, I just remember Todd who's here, you know, making, uh, really focusing on how do we bring River, the River East into this discussion, uh, and has done a great job of communicating in the River East, you see, if you're not reading, it's almost like you got a, like a, a, a by, your own byline, so I see, I see you in the River East, which I appreciate very much, because he's bringing, for those that are looking to the River East for information, they can look to his comments that are out there that are then supported by the FAQs, which are on our website and intersecting with other social media platforms, and ultimately really a focus on trying to help the public understand, um, the, the details behind it, so they can be informed when it comes time to cast your vote, whether it's at a town meeting or, uh, ultimately the referendum, and our objective at the end of the day is to get the support of the public, so we can replace this facility with a safe, modern facility that will then be, uh, part of the town for many, many years to come. And so, um, yes, thank you, and then the building committee in general, who constitutes a good part of our committees, uh, works very hard behind the scenes to help support us in all these projects, and you'll see, we have one, I think, nine B, um, so, anyway, thank you for those comments. Mal, if you want to add something?
Yeah, just a question, when, hey, I don't see it on the agenda tonight, the town manager's office received a letter with a recommendation of the adoption of Silver Petraselli at the full cost from soup to nuts. At one point, five eight nine, or five eight six.
One, five, seven, six, seven, nine, six.
When will you approve that, because until you prove that, that the number that we have for construction is not even.
So after, so the amount gets approved, then after the town meeting?
Well, no, as long as, as long as it finally gets approved, you want to lock in that seven hundred and
Right.
twenty six thousand, you have to approve the total contract, the total proposal.
So, so after town meeting is when that would trickle?
That's a board of, that's a board of selectmen approved, not a town meeting.
No, 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 no.
But yeah, they can't, they can't approve it, Andy can't sign that contract until we have the.
Understand.
Yeah, no, I know, it's, no, it's not to approve.
But they can approve before Andy signs, and when they approve, I, I, I just want to lock that seven twenty six in.
Would be the first meeting in May.
Right.
Okay.
Right after that.
Right after that.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, no.
That was the plan anyway.
That was the plan, right, it was just timing, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution's read, uh, with that modification, awarding, thank you Donna, all those, and, uh, we finished our discussions, let's move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, if opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well.
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Peter Caspari, resolution passed unanimously, thank you for the modification, thank you so much for your time, thank you for, for your input. All right. Mr. Tierney, nine D.
He's caught up in nine A. Yeah. Not the resolution regarding the appropriation for the Gilead Hill School roof replacement, the proposed resolution, which is rather long, so.
No, no, it's not rather long, it's just long.
Not a lot of picking appropriate selectmen, but that, it's a very.
Let me guess.
Very long.
I, I happen to know somebody that works in, uh, is it communications?
We can't even split this up, you have to take the whole.
I do have to.
Tiffany, please go right ahead and read the resolution.
So I'm reading the one, that's the three page long one, perhaps?
Yes.
All righty, here we go. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen approves the appropriation recommends to the Board of Finance its approval of the authorization to issue bonds, notes, or other obligations, which the Board of Selectmen deemed to be in the best interest of the town, all as provided in the following resolution. Resolution appropriating two million nine hundred twenty five thousand dollars for roof replacement at the Gilead Hill School, and authorize the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance the portion of said appropriation not defrayed from grants anticipated to total one million three hundred thirty three thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars. Resolved that the Town of Hebron appropriate two million nine hundred twenty five thousand dollars for costs related to replacement of the roof at Gilead Hill School, consisting of, but not limited to, the shell, partitions to conceal interior drains, interior finishes, rainwater drainage, special construction and demolition, fencing and other site work preparation. The appropriation may be spent for design, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, materials, site improvements, survey costs, architects' fees, engineering fees, other consultants' fees, legal fees, not net temporary interest and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project and its financing, including the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project. The HES and GHS School Roof Building Committee is established as a building committee with regards to the project and shall determine the particulars and scope of the project, and may reduce or modify the project, and the entire appropriation may be expended on the project as so reduced or modified. Number two, that the town issue bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed two million nine hundred twenty five thousand dollars to finance the appropriation for the project. The amount of bonds, notes, or obligations authorized to be issued shall be reduced by the amount of grants anticipated to total one million three hundred thirty three thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars received by the town for the project. The bonds or notes shall be issued pursuant to section seven dash three six nine and ten dash two eight nine of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty eight as amended, and any other enabling acts. The bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. Number three, that the town issue and renew temporary notes from time to time in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds from the sale of the bonds or notes for the project. The amount of the notes outstanding at any time shall not exceed two million nine hundred twenty five thousand dollars. The notes shall be issued pursuant to section seven dash three seven eight of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty eight as amended, as amended. The notes shall be general obligations of the town and shall be secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The town shall comply with the provisions of section seven dash three seven eight A of the General Statutes with respect to any notes that do not mature within the time permitted by said section seven dash three seven eight. Number four, that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, and the Treasurer of the Town, or any two of them, shall sign any bonds or notes by their manual or facsimile signatures. The law firm of Pullman and Comley LLC is designated as bond counsel to approve the legality of the bonds or notes. The Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, and the Treasurer of the Town, or any two of them, are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds or notes, to designate one or more banks or trust companies to be certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for the bonds or notes, to provide for the keeping of a record of the bonds or notes, to designate a financial advisor to the town in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes, to sell the bonds or notes at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. Number five, that the town hereby declares its official intent under Federal Income Tax Regulation, section one dot one five zero dash two, that project costs may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount, not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above for the project. The Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, and the Treasurer of the Town, or any two of them, are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable, and to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable, in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by this resolution, if issued on a tax exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. Number six, that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, and the Treasurer of the Town, or any two of them, are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. Number seven, that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, the Treasurer of the Town, the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and the Business Manager of the Board of Education are each authorized to apply to the State Commissioner of Administrative Services for and to accept or reject state or other grants for the project, to file applications with the State Board of Education or other granters, to execute grant agreements for the project, and to file such documents as may be required by the State Board of Education or other granters to obtain grants for the cost of financing the project. Any grant proceeds may be used to pay costs of the project or principal and interest on bonds, notes, or temporary notes. Number eight, that the Board of Selectmen, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, the Treasurer, the Board of Education, the Superintendent, the Business Manager of the Board of Education, and other proper officers and officials of the town are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to complete project and to issue bonds or notes to finance the aforesaid appropriation. Further resolved that contention on the aforesaid approval of the Board of Finance proposed appropriation and borrowing authorization for the aforesaid roof replacement at Gilead Hill School, the special town meeting of the Town of Hebron be held in the community room of the Douglas Library of Hebron, twenty two Main Street in Hebron, on Thursday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, at seven PM, to discuss, consider, and act a resolution approving the appropriation and bond and note authorization for said project.
Very good.
Very good. I don't, I don't think we need to read that last line.
The last sentence is subject to nine, is subject to nine C.
Yeah, that was.
So should we do, go to nine C and then come back to nine B? That's in nine C. Should we table this?
Yes, you could, I mean, you could read that last sentence and add the names, and then we can repeat it again, or we could just do it in nine C. If you want to make that.
Well, it seems like we should go to nine C, make the resolution, Scott and Kevin, and then come back to this, can we? Can we do it in that order?
I don't think the order matters.
Okay. But I'd like to approve, I'd like to go to nine C then, and approve the individuals, and then have, yes, finish that, but that order doesn't matter. All right, so we're gonna go to nine C, which is to approve the call and appoint moderator and alternate moderator for the April twenty fourth.
You already have a personal movement for.
Yeah, I know, but we can't approve it if we can't finish it.
That, well, that's kind of what I'm saying, if we, if we go into discussion here for a second.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any negative feelings towards nine C?
No.
Okay, then let's put those names in and finish nine.
I agree. Okay, if we can do that, then I didn't know if there was a separate motion.
Scott Kaufman, and the alternate is Kevin Connors.
Yeah. Further resolved that the moderator for the meeting will be Scott Kaufman, and the alternate moderator for the meeting will be Kevin Connors.
Okay. Resolution's read, any discussion, thank you for tuning.
I think we should read that again.
No.
I would have loved to.
Okay, yeah, no, actually.
I could do a dramatic retelling of it.
In, in an English accent.
In any, in a British accent, there you go.
British accent, thank you, all right. Okay, so resolution's been read, um, it's before any discussion, is there anything you wish to add to the building committee that wasn't covered already? To help us in discussion? I'm just giving you, yeah, I'm assuming not, but, okay. I'm not expecting anything, I just.
Page two, third line.
Well, I'm just, you're here, looking at you, all right, resolution's read, any additional discussion?
I'm good.
Okay, well, discussion's over, no discussion, so we'll move to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, if you know if you wish to abstain.
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Peter Caspari, the resolution passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, so, Mr. Tierney, we have nine C then.
Or is nine C covered because we filled in?
No.
So, we've covered what this is, is about, so, Mr. Larson.
Sure, uh, proposed resolution be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the meeting call for the special town meeting scheduled for Thursday, April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, at seven PM, as presented, and be further resolved that Scott Kaufman be appointed the moderator, and Kevin Connors be appointed the alternate moderator, uh.
Thank you, I'll move to the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well, Mr. Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Peter Caspari, the resolution passed unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Tierney, nine D.
Nine D, this is, uh, annual tax abatement. Nine D, this is annual tax abatement ordinance, annual interest rate review, consider ordinance, chapter 320, article 12, abatement, deferral of property taxes for persons of limited income, annual interest rate review. The tax abatement ordinance, chapter 320, article 12, was established by the Board of Selectmen in April 2000. The ordinance was created first with the General Statute 12 dash 124A. The ordinance caps a property owner's taxes at the residential dwelling at 8% of the total income for any source. Taxes that exceed the amount are conveyed to the town in the form of a lien created and secured in obligation to reimburse the town in the amount of the taxes abated with interest. Those taxes, along with the interest, are paid to the town by no later than the date of the sale or transfer of such real property or upon the death of the last surviving owner. As part of the annual interest rate review, the board has the option to adjust the interest rate. The Town Manager is recommending that the interest rate for 2024 be increased from 4.0% to 4.5% with a proposed resolution.
So could you please read the resolution and insert the recommended amount, then we'll open up for discussion and possible modification?
Of course. Be resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that in accordance with chapter 320, article 12, section 320 dash 20 of the Hebron Town Code, the tax abatement interest rate for 2025 be set at 4 and 1/4%.
Okay, let's open it up for any discussion, any discussion.
Do they have to apply for this? Is this something that has to get applied for every year? So that people that are on it and they're on it for the 4% would this year be paying 4.25?
Each year stands on.
On its own.
Whatever interest rate is on that year that they apply, like last year was four, those will stay at 4% always. And then the same person applies again this year, this lien will be 4 and 1/4 or whatever.
Okay. Okay.
So you don't adjust anything going back. It's just.
Okay. And then my other question is, what is the percent for a lien at this point if they were not on this program? We know?
Eighteen.
Okay. So this is still very substantial. And it protects them.
Right. Pretty sure it's eighteen.
It's not close to four and a quarter.
Yes, it's like one and a half percent per month.
Is it?
Yeah.
Questions, other questions? Resolution's been read. Um, discussion. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain, Mr. Larson.
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Caspari, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving along, Mr. Tanning, nine E, please.
Nine E, the budget communication approval exploratory text flyer. And that's in your packet. Budget communications approval exploratory text flyer attaches a copy of the budget transmittal summary of the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget submitted to the Board of Finance on March 28th, 2025. It is appropriate at this time for the segment discussed deciding on budget communication tools to be used for the May 6th, 2025 budget referendum. Every year, which we include exploratory text flyer. Sometimes we have a budget ballot question format, or sometimes we have an exit poll. Other times we have advisory questions or other communications to include social media, et cetera. Attached for your references, a copy of the 2024, 25 exploratory text flyer, which includes the ballot questions. If approved, the exploratory text flyer will require Town Attorney approval and be distributed in the River East bulletin as an insert before the referendum and then as a proposed resolution to be read.
Okay. Mr. Larson, please read the resolution.
Uh, sure. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize the explanatory text flyer to be prepared and distributed for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget referendum.
And that flyer, I think, I would assume at this juncture, thank you, everyone is familiar with that flyer. As residents have seen that every year, which is, um, which is great. Um, I don't think there's.
I'm sorry, just because I had forgotten since last year. The QR code goes to the budget website. Okay, just checking. And McDonald's. That would be awesome. You get like a little coupon for, for us to offer here. Yeah.
It's easy to peel, get the prizes and stuff.
Yeah.
Kind of feels illegal.
It'd be nice to have something like that. Okay. Any other stuff, discussion? I mean, obviously I, I don't think anyone's in a disagreement that this level of detail needs to go out.
I think the only thing I would add is that I would beg the board's indulgence that I think we need to be a little bit more active on social media come budget time. And I think that we need to be open to answering questions within the groups within reason. And I think we need to post this information, maybe on a weekly basis. I can go ahead and try to do that in the groups, but that's where people are going to be talking about this. And I think that's where we're going to get the highest engagement and bang for our buck.
I was going to suggest that we do do the other communication to include the social media. I don't think that I don't think at this point I, I would support an exit poll. And the advisory questions also, I mean, I.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I exit polls, I don't know what we, I don't know what we learned from the exit poll and what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
We people vote. So you know what they, what they just decided. I mean, too high, too low. That's the poll. Well, look how I voted. So I, I think that's right. And I think I think this is, our presence on social media is, is evolving. So we really appreciate that you're taking that lead there. So I think that's an area, I agree that we sort of have to evolve with it. Uh, and see how we best can support those who look there. I mean, obviously the starters to let everyone know that this is coming and all that, but um, that I'm, I'm open to, you know, letting that evolve and, and understanding how we can best support that method of communication. Uh, but I think we, I would defer to you to start to bring some of the suggestions forward as, as the budget season is passing. Um, I'm, I'm, unless someone disagrees.
Nope. Okay. I mean, the only, the only thing I would add to that conversation is, you know, I completely agree with Dan. The the questions on the referendum are not conducive to good information. But I know in the past, we have had other electronic means, um, on the town website or other things where we've done, you know, general polling. You know, maybe we'd be open to that with better question structure and then get feedback that way. But, um, yeah, I, I don't think we need to have any, anything attached to the ballot.
Okay. I, I think we're all agreeing on that. Okay. Additional discussion? All right. Resolution's read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Please note if you wish to abstain, Mr. Larson.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Caspari, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we're down to nine E. We've covered draft agenda is F as always. Uh, please bring your thoughts, uh, changes, modifications, anything at all, discussion to Town Manager's Office in preparation for our 17th meeting. Nine G, Mr. Tanning, any, any other new business you wish to bring before the board? The board member have new business they wish to bring before? Okay, 10. Consent agenda. Some of the general items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in the section may request the chair to remove for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. We have the approval of the minutes. So yeah, I'm sure the resolution.
Yeah, here.
Why don't you read that? Sorry.
Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted, and that would be the approval of minutes of March 11th, 2025, regular meeting, budget workshop. Budget, uh, March 18th, 2025, regular meeting, budget workshop. March 20th, 2025, the regular meeting. March 25th, 2025, regular meeting, budget workshop.
Dan, we have before anyone wish to pull anything out for discussion modification?
Will it good to me?
Yep.
Larson, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain, Mr. Larson.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Peter Caspari, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The agenda reports 11 on our agenda. ATM, I do not have anything to report. Tiffany B, Hebron Board of Ed.
They meet next week.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, Board of Finance. And exposition, Keith.
Handsome.
Okay. And Claudia is not with us, so if there's an update, she'll provide that at our next meeting. That moves us to section 12 on our agenda, which is public comment. Please note, I, I want to defer a reference to my, my initial comments about public comment. If someone wishes me to re-read them, I will do that. If not, I'll defer to Donna and, and if anyone online that wished to offer public comment.
No one online.
Anyone in the audience? Okay. Mr. Pettit? Would you like to offer it? Go ahead. Oh, here we go.
We'll have some public comments.
All right. Do you want to stand over there?
Actually, I'd love to sit in Richard's seat, but I won't. So, um, you know, you guys just got through another budget season, a lot of extra work, not just from this board, but a lot of other boards. Uh, a lot of extra hours. March is crazy. But some of the other things that we don't think of, even though we're there constantly, uh, the town staff that put in a ton of effort, uh, especially because we just got done voting on four minutes. And, you know, nobody thinks about even the little things like the clerk being there all the time or Donabie.
Yeah, that's an awesome.
And, and getting all those notes. And I got to tell you, I actually did read them this time and they were fantastic. So thank you all around, but especially to those people that don't normally get thanks.
Actually, I'd like to say something.
Larson, go ahead and.
I want to thank Holly and the Town Center Project for a wonderful Maple Fest. Uh, I don't know what the final numbers and all were, but it looked fantastic. And there were events literally from the corner all the way up to tents. So fantastic, fantastic job, fantastic effort. Thank you and all of your people.
Thank you very much. I will certainly relay that.
Thank you. Great comments. Doesn't work without a community that we have or the staff that we have. So thank you all very much. Thank you for taking the time to make those comments. Anything else? If not, section 13 or 13 on our agenda, please.
Move to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting at 8:03 PM.
Thank you. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.